So that was the program that was already.
The planning and zoning meeting for July 5th, 2017 will now come to order. Please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
Where were we at?
The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So you should be in the free seat, Charlie.
Yeah. Can we have roll call, please?
Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairman Shaver.
Here.
Secretary Chambers.
Here.
Dr. Fason. Member Baker.
Here.
Member Ritchie.
Here.
School Board Member Hare.
Here.
Okay, we have Quorum. Next is approval of minutes for July 7th, 2017.
I moved up here. We have accepted minutes as written on June 7th, 17.
Seven.
Seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All persons who anticipate speaking on any public hearing item must first fill out the oath card to be heard on the agenda item and sign the oath card contained thereon. These cards are located on the table near the door or may be obtained from the recording secretary. This meeting will be conducted in accordance to procedures adopted in Resolution 24-1997. Those speaking on favorable request will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on item will speak third. The applicant may make, pardon me, may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. A representative from either side for or against may cross-examine the witness. Anyone who speaks is considered a witness. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents you desire the commission to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the recording secretary. Staff, has all items been properly advertised?
Yes, they have.
Has anybody on the commission discussed this with anybody in the public? Okay, with that, we'll go to the first item of business unless there's any suggestions to move any items.
I think there's some people here for each item, so I'll leave that up to the discretion of the board.
They just move forward?
Just move forward, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go to item A.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda, item 9A, starts on page six of your packet. This is comprehensive plan amendment number 3-2016, and this is the adoption hearing. The transmittal hearings were heard earlier this year, and so this is a request to amend the future land use map and rezone approximately 19.47 acres at the southwest corner of US-1 and Dairy Road. So this is basically right across the str- right across US-1 from the entrance to Chain of Lakes Park. The request is to change the existing industrial land use and industrial M2 zoning to the commercial high intensity and community, sorry, commercial high intensity land use designation and community commercial zoning designation. This was approved for transmittal to the state, the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, on April 11th, 2017. Through that transmittal, the Department of Economic Opportunity, the Florida Department of Transportation, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and the St. John's River Water Management District submitted response letters to that transmittal. None of the agencies that responded objected to the request, and so that is why it is now being brought back before the board for adoption.
Trevor, did you say 19 or the 14.7 that's in there?
Oh, sorry. The 19 is actually the entire parcel. The portion that's being requested to be rezoned is 14.7 acres, sorry.
Okay.
The other five is still Lumber Company, right?
Do what?
The other five acres?
It's, uh, that's occupied right now by Brevard Lumber.
The lumber company.
And so that will remain in the industrial zoning designation. Yep.
I know that agricultural land is taxed differently than land that is residential. Let's say this zoning, this present zoning, is there any difference in terms of the taxes that are presently applied as opposed to the ones that we're requesting?
I don't know that, to be honest. Since it's vacant, there would probably be a minimal difference. However, I really don't have any concrete evidence to give you a hundred percent answer.
I'd like to know that between the various tracts of land and the period zoning.
Sure.
It just occurred to me in there, Chair, something I'd like to know.
Okay. Okay, let's open this to the public. Do we have any cards on this item?
Kristi Mount is here for questions.
Smell? Would you like to get up and speak, or is there anything you'd like to add?
No, at this point, if you speak, I'm sorry. Thanks. As my card stated, I'm available if there's any questions.
Okay.
This board already approved the transmission, the transmittal to the state, and as staff said, it was favorable and all the state agencies approved it, so I'm just here if you have any questions.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we'll close this. That was last card, correct?
Yes.
So we'll close this to the public, bring it back for the board. Is there, is there a motion for this item or more discussion?
With move or approval of the item is presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Can we have some more discussion?
Second with a discussion?
Oh, yes. A second with a discussion?
Okay.
I'd like for staff to go over staff's findings on this, if we could. It's on page two of six.
Okay.
And I'd like to run through those if I could.
Okay.
And the reason I say that, I want to make sure that I understand as item number six, seven, fails to maximize use of existing public, fails to maximize use of future public facilities and services, fails to provide clear separation between rural and urban uses, and I'd like a little bit more explanation on those particular items if I could.
Okay, which number specifically, sorry?
So that is, I, six, seven, nine, 11, 12, and 13. And so I, I, I don't know if we should go through all of them so we can put everything in context for the folks that are here.
Sure. So generally, what the, all of these criteria that are directly under that, that heading of summary of staff's findings, these are just, all of these statements are the sprawl statements that are in the, in the code that we review all comprehensive plan amendments for. And so basically, what this helps to ensure is that you don't end up with too much greenfield development, or what is also sometimes referred to as leapfrog development, where a lot of vacant land is skipped over to, and then development occurs with large vacant lands in between two developed areas. So six and seven deal with basically more or less utilities as far as water and sewer and then roadways. So obviously, the, the roadways are in place adjacent to this property, and water and sewer is slowly being expanded up that direction. I don't have an exact schedule of when, all of that, but the, the new Victorios, they installed water and sewer infrastructure up to their property, so water and sewer is newly available in the area, more or less. So let's see, six, that's six and seven. Number nine, the surrounding uses along, or as far as, along US-1, most of those are commercial, industrial, there is a little bit of residential along there. To the east, sorry, to the west, there are some single-family residences, there are some subdivisions next to that, or one subdivision. It has a residential for Brevard County land use. It's not within the city, it's within the county, which to my understanding allows four units and acres. So think of that as our, on the lower end of what the city's single-family zoning would be, four units and acres. Our low density is five units, so it's very comparable to that. And then it has RU-111 and SR zoning, which I'm not entirely sure off the top of my head what those are because they're Brevard County, but I do know they're residential zoning designations in Brevard County. So let's see then, 11 and 12. So in this case, the industrial that was there, which was placed on the property when it was originally annexed, of industrial was put there because of a concrete plant that used to be, I think, part of the Brevard lumber operations. That concrete plant no longer exists, and so actually, this is a step down in intensity, and we typically view commercial more favorable, adjacent to residential, especially over industrial uses. So in this case, the request to change it from industrial to commercial is more in line with best planning and what the comprehensive plan typically advocates for, is trying to not put uses like industrial that can be very noisy, you know, cause nuisances right up next to, to residential uses. So we felt that the request meets that criteria. And then 12 and 13, let's see, 12, results in poor accessibility among linked or related land, land uses. In this case, the majority of US-1, the parts that are in the city anyways, are commercial or mainly commercial. There, like I said, there is some residential and a little bit of industrial, but the majority of it's commercial. So there again, changing this from an industrial land use over to commercial. Last year, there was a rezoning for the property just to the north, across Dairy Road, to a commercial zoning designation. So we felt that of the activity that's occurring in that area, the commercial land use request in this is in line with everything that's kind of happening in that area. And results in the loss of significant amounts of functional open space. This property is currently vacant, but there, there are no wetlands or anything like that identified. It's the whole property, our data shows as uplands, so as far as being, you know, some sort of functional wetland or anything like that that serves retention purposes, we didn't, we don't have any information that shows that, that developing this property would detract from anything like that. And so the, but like I said, these are the criteria that are, that we review for every comprehensive plan amendment. We don't typically write out everything, it's just that if we start to go through this list and we see that a proposal doesn't meet this, does not meet these criteria, then we will go through and address how, how a request does not meet those criteria, and that potentially could result in a denial of, or recommendation of a denial of a request. But in this case, we, staff felt that all of these criteria were met by this request, and so therefore, that's why we're recommending approval.
Could you, have you?
I was gonna say, so this will have, according to staff, this will have less of an impact than the present zoning has as far as industrial goes, being backed up to that residential.
Correct.
Development.
Correct.
That was my impression when I read it, but I just wanted to be sure that that's the context that we're working with.
Yeah, so industrial allows, as you can imagine, a wide variety of manufacturing uses, warehousing, you know, lots of large vehicles in and out all the time, those sorts of uses, and those can cause nuisances for residential uses, especially when it comes to noise and light and those sorts of things. Commercial uses are, especially the community commercial zoning designation, is viewed as less intense than the, than the existing M2 zoning on there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Could you also address item five while you're at it?
Yes.
Page two of six.
Mm-hmm. So the, item number five fails to adequately, or fails adequately to protect adjacent agricultural areas and activities, including silviculture and including active agricultural and silvicultural activities, as well as passive agricultural activities and dormant, unique, and prime farmlands and soils. So the residential uses in that area, there are some, the, of the properties that are in the county, just to the west of this, kind of western, to the west of this property and the one across the street, that they are very low intensity residential uses. They're very large lots. I think that some of them may be used for agricultural purposes. But in this case, the, the request to go down in intensity and the fact that this property's not currently used for any agriculture, rural activities, or anything like that, staff did not feel that, that this request did not meet that criteria in number five.
Okay. Are there any more discussion? Is there any more discussion on this item? All right, so let's go to the vote.
Member Baker?
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Yes, we had a, we already had a motion and a second for discussion.
Okay.
And so now we're just finalizing it.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Shaver?
Yes.
Member Ritchie?
Yes.
Secretary Chambers?
Yes.
Dr. Fason?
Yes.
Chairman Williams?
Yes. Okay. All done. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item, which is easement vacation number 1-2017. This starts on page 29 of your packet. An easement vacation request has been received to vacate a portion of a public utility easement. The easement is located on the east side of a single-family lot located at 477 Fern Avenue. The requested easement vacation has been requested because the owner is proposing to expand the existing single-family home, and the, and the proposed addition will encroach approximately 15 feet into the 40-foot public utility easement. The applicant is requesting only the portion of the easement that will be encroached upon by the addition be vacated. The total area of the vacation request is approximately 1,065 square feet, and there is an aerial on page 31 that illustrates, illustrates where the property is located and also where the, or how the home is situated on the, on the lot. And so the, the applicant obtained all of the necessary letters, reached out to all the utility companies. We did not receive any objections from that, and so that's why we, we brought the request forward. And so with that, I will try to answer any questions that you have.
The question I had was, I know that we're only dealing with this easement, but when you, when you grant this one, and then, I know that generally, well, you give up the easement, everybody else in line is basically, has that ability now because you've cut the rest off.
That, that is a potential, however, each individual property owner would have to come in and, and request just like this one. And I will say that a 40-foot easement is quite large. Most lots have about a 10-foot easement, so 40 feet is, is much larger than most of the lots within the city.
Right. I just, I know in the past, no issues when, you know, when everybody agrees, you know, but at the same time, I'm like, well, this is the start.
Sure.
Once you give up one property, the rest can come in line and there shouldn't be any issues, but, okay. So, do you have a question? Okay.
Um, there's nothing on here that really shows the easement itself.
It would be.
That's what I'm looking at.
It would be basically.
Let's see.
Between Singleton and the, the property in red, so it's half the distance between the two.
So the easement is actually what's between Singleton and the property?
The easement actually is, so the property in red is the lot at 477 Fern. The easement is between the home that you see on that lot and the red line on the right-hand side. The right of way is Singleton Avenue is very wide, and so that's why it looks, the road looks like it's a little off-center in there. But the easement is actually between the red line on the right-hand side of the lot and the home itself.
Okay.
On the right-hand side?
So it's.
So it's not in the back of the house?
Yes, it is in the back of the house.
Okay, so.
The right is the back.
The red is the property boundary.
Correct.
So the easement is with, inside of that?
Yes.
It's inside of that, so it's actually on his property?
Correct.
That's what I'm wanting, wanting to clarify.
Yes.
Because.
Yeah, that was a little bit confusing when I looked at that. That was not.
Yes, I, and I meant to include the survey in here because the survey illustrates where the easement is actually located, but I failed to include that as an attachment, but yes.
So it's not actually going into that easement between Singleton and the red line, so.
Correct. It's all contained within.
Yeah, it's all contained within the red property, okay.
Correct. And only 15 feet of the 40 feet is being requested to be vacated. So there will still be an easement of about 25 feet on the rear of that property.
Right.
Okay.
Correct. We did not receive any objection.
Are there any more questions?
I, I have a question.
Okay.
If we grant this easement, which makes sense, I mean, it's not gonna change things a whole lot except for the person being expanding his home. For every other homeowner that's there who wishes to do the same thing, they have to come to you and also request.
That's correct.
The same.
Yep.
I have another comment.
Okay.
If you look at the aerial, you can see there's, the home to the right of it is built into there with a pool. There's, the home on the left side has something built, the home beyond that on the left has something built. So apparently, several of these people have already gotten the easements.
Not necessarily.
That, yeah, not necessarily. That is a possibility, however, the people will do things without permits, which is, which is whenever we, as a city, enforce those.
Well, if somebody's putting a pool in, the pool contractor.
Do you want me to clarify some of this on the, on the.
In the, yeah, we will in a minute. We will in a minute.
But a pool will, you know, contractor, you know, he's got a lot of liability. He's not gonna get a, build a pool like that without, without a permit, but there's a big structure that looks like it's attached to the house. And, I mean, I can't imagine that whole thing being done without a permit. I mean, I know that there's people that do it.
I can't, I really can't answer that, so, good, yeah.
But I mean, there's several homes.
Divided up, and so it may, it may very well be that it's been, and it's been a long time.
But I see one, two, three, four, five, six homes, possibly seven, that look like they have gone into that easement.
It's.
So, I mean.
You're correct.
How can you deny this guy? That's my opinion.
Okay.
The white line designate the property line?
Correct.
So let's open this up to the public. Do you have cards on this item?
I do not have a card.
Sir, did you want to come up and speak?
Uh, if you want me to, I can ask you questions if you need me to.
Okay, we'll just, we'll reserve it for that if we do, if you wouldn't mind filling out a card.
Sure.
If you, if we do. So I think we're good, but, all right, so let's close this to the public. Is there any other discussion on this item? My, my feeling is, is I don't perceive this to be any issues with this. After all, I mean, everybody's basically agreed. I think it's an easy.
Well, I make a motion to approve the easement vacation number 3-2016.
Okay, is there a second? Any seconds? Can we have a vote on this?
Dr. Fason?
Yes.
Secretary Chambers?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Shaver?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Ritchie?
Yes.
Chairman Williams?
Yes. Okay, sir. You're good to go. When does this go, before city council?
It will be before city council next week, on Tuesday.
Okay, so just please be sure to, show up to city council. All right, next item, please.
Okay, this item begins on page 34 of your packet, and this is for conditional use permit number 4-2017 to allow a school at 2063 Garden Street in the general use zoning district. The applicant, Able A- Able Academics, on behalf of Good Shepherd Lutheran Church of Titusville, is requesting a conditional use permit to establish a private school on 11.7 acre parcel located at 2063 Garden Street in the GU zoning district. A conditional use permit, CUP number 7-2004, was previously approved at the property to allow a fellowship hall, a preschool building, and to allow an expansion of the existing church. The applicant is proposing to utilize the existing preschool building to establish a private school. Based on the following findings and the criteria established in section 34-76 of the Land Development Regulations, the staff recommends approval of, of CUP request number 4-2017, which, with conditions, which I will read off. First condition is any modifications to the existing exterior site lighting will require submittal and approval of the appropriate permits and exterior lighting plan, and the second condition is the hours of operation shall not be earlier than 7:00 AM nor later than 5:00 PM. The conceptual plan that was approved that allowed the construction of the building that will be used for this request is on page 44 of your packet. And I'm not sure how big the copies are in there, but basically, the, the building that's, that they'll be using is existing already, and so there's existing parking and stormwater and the building itself. And so they will basically be utilizing the building that you see there. It's marked, I think, Sunday School, Preschool, Phase 1B. And so more or less, the site improvements are complete because of the previous conditional use permit for preschool, and so they are now wanna use that building for regular school, and private school.
Well, school existed prior to the request.
It, it was preschool previously, was the previous CUP, and now they're just requesting a conditional use permit for, for a private school, similar to the request that was heard for the old Publix, the former Publix building, for that charter school. So with that, the applicant's here, and I can also try to answer any questions that you have.
Real quick, does anybody have questions of staff before we open to the public?
I do.
I do.
Um, reading through this on your recommendations, I'm wondering why you have hours of op, I, I can understand no earlier than seven, but why no later than five?
I believe that was due to the, the proximity to some of the other residential uses in that area. On Garden Street, there's a lot of commercial uses, but on the backside of, kind of between Garden and Tropic, there is a lot of residential uses back there, and so that's why staff is recommending that condition. However, if you feel that that's unnecessary, please feel free to recommend, you can recommend that it not be included or that a later time be included on there.
Well, I would think six would be at least a better time, ending time, in case there's after-school care involved.
Okay.
In that. I mean, if you get off work at five, you can't cer- certainly can't be there at five to pick up your children.
Understood, sure.
No, no, I can agree with that. I mean, I, I think all the grade schools I've ever went to were by residential, so.
There's after-school activities as well.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I have a question on that.
Okay, Mr. Shaver, vice chairman.
It represents to this idea of changing the closing time for the school. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but by having that at a later hour, would that impact the people that live around there, the residents? Because you hear you, in other words, you, people are coming home from work, five, six o'clock. And of course, the, the school is gonna have more people showing up, picking up kids.
Sure.
And so there's that traffic. So is that going to, in your opinion, based on what you know about this property, would that be something that we should consider?
In this case, the, when the building was originally built and the site plan was approved for, for whenever the, the building that they will be using was approved, all of those traffic concerns would have been taken into account. I do know that, let me see if I can find it here, I do know that Garden Street has significant capacity remaining on it, so I don't believe there'll be any level of service issues or anything like that. I do know that, let me see if I can find it here, I do know that Garden Street has significant capacity remaining on it, so I don't believe there'll be any level of service issues or anything like that. So let's see here.
Well, you have stated on page thirty-seven, the proposed number of students and employees at the private school during hours of operation is twenty people.
Which is very minimal for traffic impacts.
That's not gonna.
Right.
And these, these are children, they're not driving.
Correct.
I don't see how it's gonna impact.
Well, the only thing, you know, when you, I, I live by Apollo School, and you know that parents show up anywhere from half hour to forty-five minutes ahead of time. And that's my consideration, is that sometimes this does happen, where traffic really does back up, and this is on Garden Street. So we have to, we have, not only, we have to take into account that it is off a main artery.
Sure.
And it's backed up to a residential, so that was my question, is, the important thing is, is there adequate parking for parents to show up, wait for their kids, without obstructing the residents who live in the area, that, that's my concern.
Sure, and to elaborate a little on that, on the conceptual plan, there on page forty-four, the existing sanctuary facility is near the, near Garden Street, right, along Garden Street, and the school is actually behind that. And so part of the requirements for the CUP is that there has to be dedicated pickup and drop-off lanes for, for student pickup. So basically, at the, there's kind of a bean-shaped landscape island, and the road goes around both sides of it, about, near the top, about a third way across the page. That's the designated pickup and drop-off area, is my understanding, and so I, staff believes there will be, based on the number of students, and the distance that that pickup and drop-off area is from the street, staff doesn't, is not opposed and feels that that area is adequate for, for that purpose.
Okay, I, I get that, that sounds reasonable. The other thing is, the, turning this into a private school, is that going to increase the student, I mean, right now, it's a preschool building. So if it goes to the next level, are we going to have more automobiles, more students, is that projected into this project?
I would prefer the applicant talk about the student count and all that, I'll be glad to follow up once they, if they speak, but, I mean, generally, yes, if you have more students, you will have more traffic generated, but I don't know how the existing count or the existing use of the building will differ from the, from the proposed uses of the school.
All right, so I had a question about the exit on Tropic. What's Tropic considered? It's not a collector.
It may just be a local street.
Right, so my, my concern is, have you considered putting stipulation that no through traffic, through traffic or through Tropic? Because of it being a local.
Correct, so basically, in, on page four or five, under criteria number four, this is additional criteria specifically for the commercial and mixed-use zoning. Per section nine point four of the road, in, of the Transportation Technical Manual, which, and this is, nine point four is the roadway classification list, Garden Street is considered an arterial roadway, Tropic Street is considered a local road. The City Council must approve the continued use of the access on Tropic Street for the purposes of the school, so they do have an access on Tropic now.
Right, no, I see that, it's just that a lot of times, it's a condition, although you can't prevent it fully, it's basically put in a condition on there to ensure that you're not throwing additional traffic, potential additional traffic on.
On to a local road.
Yeah.
Sure, and so that's why, if, if you feel like that should be a condition, there again, you can certainly make that recommendation.
Although, you know, I mean, honestly, I would say that that would be a consideration, or that's something that the commission should consider, but at the same time, I'm looking at Tropic Street, I don't really perceive a lot of residential in that area. I don't, I don't see a nuisance possibility, on the other hand, traffic determining which, which way they're going could be an issue.
Sure.
So, I'm just saying that that would be a consideration that, that I would look at, is a potential condition. The other question I had was, what is the current stipulations with the preschool and the hours that you, that we did previously in two thousand four, per, per hours of operation? Or were there any?
Well, let's see, I don't see anything in the staff report about it, so.
So I'm saying, since this is something that's controlled through the state, I would let the state laws, as well as the, we've done this before with New Life.
I'm confused, is the preschool presently operating?
I don't know if it's presently operating, but it was previously approved.
I, I know that, but my question.
I'll say the applicant can probably answer these questions much better than I can.
If you want to come up with, the applicant, want to come up, I know you probably have a card, so.
I do.
We'll just consider.
Um, I'm Monique Todd, I live at four one six five Heller Road in Titusville, um, I've opened many schools like this, I have double master's degrees in education and a doctorate in educational leadership, and there's only going to be forty-eight students in this building. This is for children with autism, there'll be only six kids per class, many of these families have more than one child, so we're talking about the numbers of cars go down and down and down, um, we already have a waiting list for them. The hours truly will be from eight to three-thirty, we don't have an after-school program planned at all, because they really need to be with a small group, and a registered behavior technician will be with them. So they're always gonna have a, a behavioralist who's with them all day long, helping them to get through the school day, so there's no need really for after-school, unless it's like a Christmas performance or something special like that, that would be a rare seasonal thing that might happen.
Are you presently operating as a school?
We're not.
With students attending?
We are not in there yet, no, but there is a preschool.
No students are attending presently?
No, 'cause what, you, I think what's getting confused is.
Is the preschool operating?
The preschool is operating on the site, the parish hall, which was built as a nine-classroom, looks just like a school, could not be more of a school, has nine classrooms, an auditorium, a stage, people rent it for weddings, has been vacant this whole time. So that is the building I'm speaking of, that building's been used for an occasional chili cook-off, but otherwise, the church has really needed that funding to be able to rent it, they're really happy that that's gonna come through for them. Um, they're excited, I'm gonna be paying five thousand dollars a month rent, they're feeling that's really great for them as a community, as a church, and I couldn't ask for more of a turnkey school, I've already seen the health inspectors come out, said it's perfect, the fire inspectors walked through, it's perfect, it's coded just fine for everything we want to do, I just need permission to make it a private school.
How many students?
There will be, the first year, thirty-six.
How many students are there presently?
Zero.
Last year.
At the preschool, that's a different building, and I really, that's, I don't know.
No, I'm just asking, how many students were on that property?
I would say.
Last year?
Probably forty on the preschool building.
Okay.
But that's.
Somebody can answer that, so.
This is Tom Law, he's president of the church board.
Yeah, my name's Tom Law, and president of Good Shepherd Lutheran Congregation, and preschool right now has about forty-two.
And you anticipate another forty-eight?
Well, they're in a different building now.
But it'd be on the same site.
Yes, it'd be on the same property.
Same property, not anywhere near.
Looking at the traffic flow.
Yes, yeah, the preschool elementary is basically a early learning center, so they're ages three, four, and five.
I think the, the confusion is, in this here, is proposing to u, utilize the preschool building to establish a private school.
It was built for that purpose of preschool, but it never came about.
Okay, but I'm just saying, you say you have another facility building there that you're going to be using also, and that's not outlined here.
That's not us using, the church is retaining that building and using it for its in-home preschool, the church VPK, separate funding, separate thing, that still belongs to the church, we're just renting the one vacant building that has the nine classrooms that's empty right now.
That, that's not, that's not stated in. So that, that clarifies the problem.
So you, you don't have a possibility, a hundred students on the site.
On the site.
Both schools.
Totally different operating hours, first, at the preschool, you're not her, but the preschool director, they stay as late as six o'clock, they're there for while parents are working, ours is eight o'clock to three-thirty, like a regular school day, they will be dropped off and picked up, there's no after-school program or morning program, just, that's our school hours.
Okay, I was just impressed that you no longer had the preschool there, and you were bringing in the, the other school.
It's just that, we're working it out together, so.
I got my understanding now.
Yes.
Good.
Any further questions?
I think we're good. So my thoughts were this, was that, just like what we discussed with New Life, was to let the state regulate some of that, at the same time, I know we're dealing with two different conditional use permits. But it may be to give them more flexibility at a later date, if they, in that way, they don't have to come back and re-permit, it might be better to up the time for closure. That's just my thought, and, and I only say that because it would be a burden upon them to kind of have to come back.
Of course.
And it would be more flexible from that. The other issue that, that I see is the Tropic, 'cause we've, we've had that, I'm sure that the, I know that this has probably gone out five hundred feet.
Of course it hasn't.
But it doesn't truly reflect the people that it could impact, so I would just say, maybe put a stipulation to say, deter traffic on to traffic and you only use Garden.
Do you want me to answer that?
I mean.
I'm sorry.
Well, I, how, how about we do this, in this way we can move forward?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because, you have a card, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so with that, are there any more questions of staff?
Can we clarify the summary here, because?
The summary?
Uh, on page thirty-four, seventy-four, and, and the reason I said the applicant is proposing to utilize the preschool building to establish a private school, that's not the case. And, and that, that led to my questioning.
Understood.
What we're doing here. So we, we need to clarify that in the, in the summary.
Ken?
You can call preschool Phase One B.
Yeah. Good?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so let's do this, let's go ahead and open this to the public, can we get the first card on this, please?
Well, two of them spoke.
Okay.
Juliana.
Would you like to come up?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay?
Hello, I'm Julianne Niddell, I'm the principal of the school, and just to answer the, the question about Tropic, with the, with the car loop, the intention is to actually make it so parents can't loop back to Tropic, but instead loop back through the, the Garden Street, the Garden Street exit.
Okay.
So that's already cut off, so they're not going through the residential area.
Okay, is that it?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll just go through the cards, and if you want to come up, if you don't, you can decline.
Monique Todd.
Would you like to come back up?
Okay.
Okay.
Tom Law.
I was just gonna try to clarify, the building was constructed as a fellowship hall, with Sunday School, kids in that, Sunday School is for kids, it's really diminished, so this building has not been used the way it was intended to. And I think this is a God thing, I mean, I don't, that, this has happened, 'cause the community is really in need of autism schooling, I have a grandson that's autistic, and, and the training he's got has made a big change in his life. So, the fellowship hall, that's what we call it, it was never called the Early Learning Center, we always had that building separate, so I, that might clarify it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, next card? All right, so we'll close this to the public, bring it back for, for the board. Is there any questions of staff, or any discussions on this?
I would just like to ask that if you do want to make any recommendations to modify the conditions, that you please include that in your recommendation, or your motion.
I'm ready, whatever the motion is.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the conditional use permit number four dash two zero one seven, to allow the school at twenty sixty-three Garden Street for general use zoning district.
Ken?
Are you adding the six o'clock closure?
Okay, was, was, any other conditions, or is that your motion?
That's the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, and can we have a roll call on this?
Vice Chairman Shaver?
Yes.
Member Baker?
Yes.
Member Ritchie?
Yes.
Secretary Chambers?
Yes.
Dr. Faison?
Yes.
Chairman Williams?
Yes, okay, and so, and this is my thought, is that they still can go to City Council. The motion is, is favorable to the applicant, I think they're getting everything they want, if city staff and City Council desires to increase, it might be something that you should discuss, but this is your first hurdle? And when does it go back for the council?
This will be before the City Council next week as well, on Tuesday.
Okay, and so, there you have it, thank you. All right. Next item.
Okay, so the next item is a summary, and kind of to bring you all up to speed on what we as staff have been working on in regards to the urban mixed-use zoning district, so I'll read through the explanation and kind of give you a background as to what has happened before this meeting. So on April twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen, City Council directed staff to initiate changes to the urban mixed-use UMU zoning district, to facilitate the city's goals of becoming a trail town and capitalize on the opportunities the coast-to-coast trail represents. Staff conducted a public workshop with interested citizens on February sixteenth, twenty seventeen, and received feedback from the attendees, the general consensus was, non-automobile-oriented uses should be allowed on any property within the UMU zoning district, so long as certain minimum conditions of those uses are met. And so also attached to this is a summary of the, of the history of the UMU zoning district and changes to the regulations since the implementation of the nineteen ninety-two land development regulations. So on page fifty, you will see the, what staff, this is just general guidelines as to what staff is proposing, this is not in ordinance format or anything like that, but first, I wanted to go to page sixty-three. And what's on page sixty-three are the notes from the public meeting that occurred on February sixteenth, many of the people that are in the room still attended that meeting in February, we just, it was an open forum discussion, we basically just informed everyone that attended. The City Council has given us this direction, what the, you know, informed them of the coast-to-coast trail, and engaged their interest as to would they like to see some changes to the zoning district to allow more of a mix of uses, so that people could reuse their property in different ways and cater to the users of the trail. And the main reason for this is, right now, the urban mixed-use zoning district does allow for residential and non-residential uses, however, all non-residential uses have to be located at an intersection of Deleon Avenue or Park Avenue. And so, on page fifty-nine of your packet, you will see that the properties that are there, everything inside of the green boundary is all of the, all of the properties that are inside of the urban mixed-use zoning district. And only those properties in this map that are colored allow for non-residential uses, so you will see several are used for industrial uses, some of them are used for a commercial use, some are residential, and some are just vacant commercial properties. So, we felt that this was very limiting for some of the people that own property right along the trail, that they couldn't put a commercial use along the trail, that's very common practice in other municipalities that have these sorts of rail-to-trail projects, that people will put up a little cafe, or, you know, bistro, something like that, bicycle shop along the trail, so that they can take advantage of, of the people that, that are out, running, walking, biking, those sorts of things. And so, the, this document, page summary that, that we had is more or less just, like I said, a history of, of the urban mixed-use zoning district and the changes that occurred to it since it was originally implemented in nineteen ninety-two. And so, what staff is proposing now is, starts on page fifty and goes on to page fifty-one, but generally, what staff would, is recommending is changing where commercial uses are allowed, so long as there are certain conditions that be met. And so, you see there, the allowable uses section, we felt that the uses that are listed under there, everything that's not underlined is already allowed in the urban mixed-use zoning district. But right now, you have to be at an intersection of Deleon or Park Avenue. So we're proposing to add two, two uses to that, however, that use can expand based on how this discussion goes this evening. The two that staff are proposing to add into this are bicycle sales and service. We felt that that was a, you know, compatible use with the trail and they're typically low impact as far as they don't cause a lot of nuisances to any neighbors or anything like that. And another are live work units, so that people can, if they have a, you know, a two-story structure or they want to have a small cafe but live upstairs or somewhere else on the property, that they would have the ability to do, to do those sorts of things as a, as a live-work type situation. On page fifty-one, you see the proposed use conditions. So these are just, these were just a start, these were what staff thought were basically a bare minimum that would need to be addressed to allow these sorts of things. And so, you know, limiting automobile-oriented uses through use restrictions, we're not trying to, to have everyone have a parking lot on their property and those sorts of things. We want, the goal is to, to make this a walkable area. And so you shouldn't have, as pedestrians, you shouldn't have to walk by a parking lot or that sort of thing to get to these, to get to these uses. Many of the properties are rather small, just because they're, they're much older than other areas in the city, so it would be difficult to get parking on-site anyways. Things like prohibiting drive-throughs, that sort of thing helps, you know, foster more of a pedestrian-oriented area. Another thing is requiring adequate screening and buffers through, between residential and non-residential developments. This, that can be done through landscaping, fences, things like that to help separate those, those residential uses from, from a neighboring commercial use. Additionally, we felt that coming up possibly with specific landscape standards for the zoning district, right now our landscaping requirements typically are twenty feet along a roadway and ten feet along any other property line. On properties that are as small as many of these are in this area, that would be unfeasible in many situations. And so, requiring landscaping, but requiring landscaping that's proportionate to the size of property, we felt would be important as well. And then a big one that we felt would need, so, maybe some unique strategies that's not typically in our parking code in the rest of the city would be basically establishing parking standards that reflect, again, the size and scale of the properties in the area and the types of uses that go on. It's, on a lot of these properties, it would be very difficult to even get a parking lot on there. So it may be, you know, allowing on-street, allowing more on-street parking, coming up with a shared parking district or something like that. There's many different ways to go about it and we haven't explored really any one in particular. This, here again, this is just a, supposed to be a discussion between the commission, the members of the public that are here and us. And kind of, my role this evening is to, to listen and go back and then move forward into, into drafting an ordinance. And of course, as all other land development regulations do, that will come back before this commission and the city council then for, for adoption. And through this process, we've been, I've been in regular contact with the, the public. Any, anyone that attended the meeting left an email address, we give them updates, we update the city's website. We have a specific page on the, on the planning department website that has information. Every time we get something done, we post that on there so that, so that anyone that's interested can, can go and look and contact us. So with that, I'd like to open it up. Anyone from the public that would like to speak, I'd certainly like to get their opinion and yours as well.
I got a question.
Sure.
Live work units, give me an example, what's that mean?
So a live work unit is something that is, a lot of times, they are for people that do, like an artisan, someone that does, an artist that paints, they can have a workshop space, maybe a loft that they live in, but then they sell their, their artwork from the same, basically the same structure, same, similar situation sometimes with a little cafe or maybe a little convenience store where you don't, they don't need a lot of space to operate their business. And because of that, they can live and work in the same building. And so that's more or less what they are, yeah.
Live work, okay.
And a lot of times, it, it makes for, it makes the possibility of someone operating their own business more affordable because they don't have to pay for a commercial retail space and for a living space as well. They can pay, you know, pay for one space to live and work in it. So it makes it possible for, you know, startup businesses and that sort of thing to, to get started that way.
I have a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
Increased capacity of existing facilities and one of the things, reducing parking stall size. I'll tell you, I'd have a problem with that. Because when you go to a park, a small parking lot, this is on page fifty-one of seventy-four. That says shared park and you, and I, and I say that I would hate to see parking spaces get any smaller because if somebody opens a car door, you know, it, it's a real, it's a serious problem.
Sure.
And, and not only are you limited, but your automobile itself has stops. You know, when you push your door open, it goes to the first space. And then you have to push it further to make your door wider. So if you're gonna shrink these parks, I'm gonna get ticked off if someone gets inside my car. I'm just telling you.
No, I understand.
So I, I, I think that needs to be, seriously, it needs to be addressed. I, I don't know exactly what the sizes are now.
They're larger than the national, our code allows spaces that are larger than the typical average. A typical parking space is nine by eighteen, nine feet wide by eighteen feet long. Compact car spaces, which are becoming more popular, a lot of those are eight feet by still about eighteen feet. Our code allows for a ten by twenty, or requires a ten by twenty parking space. So we, and that doesn't sound like a lot, you think a foot wider, but for every nine parking spaces of ours, you could have ten. And so it adds up very quickly, especially in places in districts like this that are already tight on space. It, it does make a difference. And also too, every time you add more impervious surface, you have to have more stormwater attention. So it makes, it makes development in tighter areas like this more difficult, the more asphalt you have to put down. So I do understand your concern. But I just, we do, we already do require larger than, than standard parking spaces everywhere in the city.
Okay, I, I didn't know the dimensions of the space.
Sure.
My point is, I have been to places where they have shrunk the space to the point of, I don't really want to park here.
Understood.
And, and when you, when you introduce that, then you discourage people from actually going to that parking space.
And that's not our goal, I, we're just here to present options.
So, I know, I'm just, I'm just bringing that up as a point, so that when you go through this process, to make sure that you don't shrink the spaces to the point where people won't go.
Sure, understood.
Want to damage their automobiles. The other thing is remote parking. Within the, within this area around the trail, does the city own any properties in, in this area?
If we do, I'm not a hundred percent familiar which ones they are.
Because I, I'll tell you what, I, I've been to a few, I'm trying to think of where I was just a couple of weeks ago, I can't think of the place, but it's here in Florida. And what they've done is the city has taken over lot, empty lots, okay? And providing public parking every few blocks. And that's so encouraging. When, when you visit a town and you're going through a commercial area and you want the tourists to, to walk up and down the streets and do the thing that they do, go shopping in the local venues, you need to really have adequate parking. Otherwise, they take one trip, the parking's inadequate, and they just say, hey, I'm not going back there if I had to walk five, six, seven, ten blocks to, to get to the area I wanted to go to.
Understood.
So if you have a, an empty lot, I would encourage the city to purchase these lots for every, you know, I don't know how, I, I wouldn't know, I don't know what the standard would be in a community, how to have these vacant lots for public parking. But these are free parking.
Sure.
And it really, really encourages people. You, you see people really gravitate to these areas where the city provides more than adequate parking. Especially when you start like this and you have this trail, people are going to want to do different things. There are going to be other venues that show up on holidays and weekends.
Sure.
People are gonna want to do, and parking is critical. So I would recommend that if the city could, if they have any properties available within two or three or four blocks of, of this trail, that the city take the time to consider putting in public parking.
Sure.
To the, to the extent that it really would make it attractive, even if they, you know, even if you have, you charge a dollar for.
No, understood.
Couple hours, doesn't matter. But I, I would strongly recommend that.
On the table on page sixty, it has vacant publicly-owned land listed. And there's one right next to the trail at Blanton and Deleon.
Where are you?
On page sixty.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's three on here, one, one right next to the trail.
That's true. So it could be an option then that, you know, that's something the city could look into. And that's, there again, there's multiple different ways, a lot of times, it, there is no one best solution. So it's kind of taking advantage of whatever you have, you know, whether it's vacant properties that are there, on-street parking. So it will probably in the end be a mix of all of these. We were just trying to, you know, get an idea, get the idea out there that there are multiple solutions to this, but yeah.
They got to say that, that really, I mean, the whole purpose of having the trail and to get people to use it is to make it as convenient and easy as possible. And if you do that and people are not hassled when they, when they decide to visit different places along the trail, that is, that's a tremendous selling point, is to be sure. And also, you know, you're gonna have places, if, if, this is a, creating a trail town, you're also gonna have to provide bicycle storage along this trail somewhere.
Of course, yeah.
So that, that has to be built into the, into the.
And part of that was accomplished with the, the construction of the welcome center, with the bike shop there and the bike racks and everything like that and the public restroom. That was, the goal is part of that would be helpful in, in the people that are using the trail.
Well, it depends on how much of a, it depends on how much of a, of an area where you're going to put these facilities.
Of course.
As, as the business is developed along the trail, it gets spread out.
Sure.
And so as, as it gets spread out, you're going to have more bicycle racks and more parking are gonna have to become available.
Of course.
If it's gonna be successful, otherwise it just won't work.
Sure.
Sir, hey, I'm giving you a free parking lessons after immediately, at your convenience.
Please.
I'm willing to do that.
Okay, I'm sure.
I, there's a vacant commercial property right in the very center, it's a large lot. I mean, if, if we could acquire that and make that a parking, that would be.
Right at the corner of Main and Deleon?
Yeah.
That's, it's owned by FP and L. And so, it's not, not to say it's impossible, but I don't know that, what their plans are for that. It's not the substation, it's actually just north of the substation, but they do own that.
But there's nothing on it?
It's vacant right now, they had, I don't know if they do training or something, they're, they have a few poles with nothing connected to them. So I don't know what they do for line workers to train on or something like that, but.
But I could essentially see this whole district being like an art boutique-type atmosphere where people can walk and bike, just like Key West and St. Augustine.
And that, that's the goal, to create, to create a pedestrian-focused environment that it, that it's friendly for those sorts of activities.
So I mean, where you could limit the traffic through there to, you know, to certain areas and just allow a lot of walking, but that, there's a lot of potential there that I think would be really good for Tyusville.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to take advantage of now while everything's still, you know, up, the trail's nearing, nearing completion but isn't quite there yet, but we'd like to get, trying to get ahead of it if we can.
Okay, so we got a lot of people here, so why don't we open this to the public? And since I believe all these people have participated and hear their input.
See a lot of faces, yeah.
And do we have, how many cards we have on this?
I don't have any cards for this side.
Okay, so how many of you would like to come up here and, and have input? And so if you wouldn't mind, after you speak, at least make sure that you fill out a card. I know, I saw you, sir, go fill one out, so.
I thought I was, I was a little late, I thought everybody filled them out already.
So if you wouldn't mind, if, if you, if you want to come up and speak, please grab cards. And sir, if you want to come up and speak? And then that way, that way we can get everybody on record. And we definitely welcome your input.
Absolutely.
Oh, my name's Frank Schaaf and my business is on ten twenty-five Blanton Street. And, and we've been there about twenty-five years. And I was at the forum in February and, and we, we also discussed a lot of things that the city might possibly do to clean that area up and to make it safer. And I haven't heard anything to that, I haven't read anything proposed to that. And we talked about putting some lighting on the streets, some sidewalks, some, you know, a little better police protection out there. You know, some, you're asking landowners to beautify the area, but I don't, you know, it's a two-way street. We need to get the city to do something also. The, the, the trail, I don't know if any of you have been on it recently, but it's being used for drug deals and there's, there's used ugly things up on the bridge. And I walked up there myself and there's, there's like not, it's not a good place to be. I witnessed it every day, people going down the trail to use it for drug deals and stuff. You know, to, to prepare this place for future maybe people coming is great, but you need to also take into consideration the people that have been here and have, have provided jobs and, and businesses, you know, in that community now, we all have to coexist.
Yeah, I agree.
What kind of business do you have there, sir? Uh, we, we are, we cater to the beverage industry. Some of our core customers are like Coca-Cola and Pepsi. And we, we manufacture fabricated items like platforms and handrails and staircases and that sort of thing on that site. And, and then we, 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 we take what we build and we take it out in the field and assemble it at, at their factories, you know.
I have a question, just hanging on a second, I want to ask staff. Has it, are there any, there was a plan for Garden Street beautification with planters and greenery and there was something that was proposed, I don't know how far it ever got off the ground. Because the trail was coming in and we, we knew that that overpass was gonna be there. Are there any plans at the present time for beautification and upgrading that area around the trail? Like, you know, the, the trail, I'm sure at night you would not want to be there. So is there any lighting aspects or is, are there any plans at all going forward to, to upgrade that area of trail?
It's my understanding there, the city is looking into lighting on the bridge itself. I don't know how much else of the trail, because technically the city does not own the trail. So it's not, we have to get approval to put any kind of improvements. I believe it's, it's either from FDOT or the D, or DEP that actually owns the, the land under the trail. So we have to get clearance from them before we can just place an improve. It's not to say that they haven't been willing to let us do things, but it's not just that we can immediately go out and do something. We do have to get approval first. As far as the Garden Street improvements, I, that's, Garden Street is an FDOT right-of-way, so they're the ones that, that maintain that. I do know that in the near future, they will be resurfacing that road. I do not know if that includes any kind of additional landscape meetings or anything like that, though. I can get back to you on it, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't, I would like very much to, maybe you can bring the commission up to speed on, on what's planned for the Garden Street area.
Sure.
And also, if anything is, the trail itself, up to the city limit, of course. Is there anything planned for that, for that area going forward?
As far as lighting, and I just thought of this, but as far as lighting improvements and that sort of thing, it is, although people will still use it at night, technically, the operating hours, and this is common for, for almost any trail, is from dawn until dusk. And so typically lighting now in urban areas, it might be a little different because you may have people out using it. But typically lighting on those sorts of facilities is discouraged just because more or less, they don't want people using the trail at night just for, for safety and there are things like that. Now obviously, people will go out and, and do that, but they try not to incentivize that by, by putting lighting and some of that. Now that's not to say that lighting could not be, couldn't be put on some of the streets and that sort of thing in the area that we're talking about with the urban mixed use. And to, to address Mr. Schaaf's concerns, I didn't write any of the, it's in the minutes, or the minutes, the summary that I took of the public meeting that we had. And we did plan on presenting all of those things as far as some of the, some of the items that the residents would like to see that the city would have to provide, such as lighting, things, increased police patrols, things like that. We fully intend to forward those onto city council when we bring an ordinance forward. However, we can't control those sorts of things necessarily through zoning. And so that's why we haven't written about it, because we can't, we can't control those things through, through the zoning code. But we're, we do fully intend to present those items as well to the city council as other recommendations that came out of this effort. So they will be presented, it's just, they may not be in an ordinance format because it's not really something you can control from the zoning code.
I think the problem with the tunnel vision here is that, that it needs to be addressed at every phase of this because, because it is an important thing. There, there's a bad element out there at night, okay? It may not be the bicyclers that you're looking for during the day or the art people that you're looking for, but there's a terrible element out there as soon as the sun goes down.
Which, I'm trying to locate in my mind, what, what area are you talking, I'm talking about?
Main Street.
Basically the entire area in that colored block right there, but, uh,
You mean on Garden?
My facility is, is on Blanton and DeLeon, which is one block in from, from Garden Street.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, I can see the trail from my property.
I've got it now.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Garden Street, okay.
Remind me again, the relationship between the county, municipality and the state as it relates to the trail?
Well, the trail runs through parts of the county and not, of course, parts of the city. Um, and I'm not a hundred percent certain of the, the intricacies of what the city is actually responsible for on the trail, but we don't, we do not technically own the land the trail is on. I do believe we have certain maintenance responsibilities for parts of the trail. Um, but as far as improvements, those sorts of things, they all have to be approved by, by the entity that actually owns the trail. Um, and so that's kind, that's more or less the relationship. We, we are working with the state agencies. But as far as all of the ins and outs of those, of those contracts or any of those sort of agreements, I, I really can't answer those.
Who, who owns that? State or?
It's a state, it's a state agency. I'll, I'll have, I can get that information to you. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think.
It is a state.
I think it's either the Florida Department of Transportation or the, the DEP.
I think it's DOT.
Okay.
It's state.
But it's state regardless, yes.
Is there, uh, with improvements, okay, since it's state, okay, it's not city per se?
Mm-hmm.
Is there caution, is there cost sharing or do we go to the state who say we want to see these kind of improvements for the security and safety of our residents and, and people who are visiting our city? You know, and, and I'm going to, I think the trail's a great idea and it's been in, in the works for a number of years. But if this is going to be a PR, if, if you're going to sell this to people coming from out of state and within the state, okay, we have to be very careful that that particular area gets a good reputation and not a bad one.
Of course.
We need to protect that name for our city and, and, and the facility itself. So I suggest that we really start looking at what this gentleman is saying here and, and we need to get on it now so that we don't have a, a problem going forward because if the reputation gets out, oh, man, that's a dangerous area. You don't want to go. Then that's the end of it. You might as well just pave it over just to get.
No, of course, and, and to.
It's, it's just littered with hookers and drug addicts and drug, and people wanting to buy drugs. And, I mean, they're, they're back and forth all day long, all night long. It's, 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 it's the worst place I've seen in central Florida is that, that colored block right there.
They must have been there before.
They've been there forever and we've been complaining about it. Thieves, all kinds of problems over there, you know? We, there, the, the police say they're doing something about it, but then they don't, you know, they, where are they? You know, I sit there all day long. I sit there at my place and watch drug deals going down all the time. Hookers coming by soliciting my employees and stuff all the time. It's, it's just ridiculous. And it's right off the trail. It's, it's in plain view of the trail.
Well, I, I'm going to make a suggestion, okay, and, and maybe the commission, I'm sure, will. Is that we need to approach the city council and the city manager, okay, and get a handle on this so that.
Cause all they're going to do is take that.
We, we have some, some ideas, some focus as to what can be done to, to, to make this.
Yeah, I, I'm with you guys. I'm trying to help you, you know? You're never going to have a, you're never going to draw the quality people that you're talking about in that neighborhood.
I'm concerned about the relationship. Who's responsible for what? Do we have representation on the state committee or whatever committee? And how, you know, the setup, what is the setup? Who's responsible? You say the department of, uh?
I mean, we're responding, I mean, our law enforcement officers can certainly patrol on the trail.
No, I don't, I, I, no, I'm, I'm concerned about the total setup. How is it set up?
I'll have to get you that information.
What representation do we have or do we have representation? Someone who can express the concern that we have here this evening?
I'll have to look into and get back to you. That's all I can tell you.
I appreciate it.
If I, if I may, um, just, the police department is well aware of the issues that go on that, in that area. We have a monthly staff meeting where the police department, public works, city manager, planning, everyone gets together and it's solely about the trail, about the progress on the trail, what can be done to make improvements to that. And they're aware of it, um, and they, they are constantly trying to, to clean that area up. It's just, they understand and I think they're working on getting information out that it, it won't happen overnight, unfortunately. They would love nothing more than for it to be able to happen overnight. Um, but every time someone brings that up, uh, the, the police representative always requests that people call in and report these sorts of things because they can't always be right there and they're not going to see everything. And I, I know sometimes whenever, they understand that whenever people call, sometimes they don't get there in time to see some of these activities going on. But every time they call, they can have that log and then they can potentially dedicate additional resources to those sorts of things. So, um, every, everyone is aware of it at the, at the city level and they're working as hard as they can to, to get those issues resolved. But unfortunately it just isn't an instantaneous change.
And I'm calling you right now and I'm telling you it's all day, all night long over there.
And, and I, I understand.
Well, you know, I, I know that in, in Palm Bay, is it Palm Bay? I think I was just reading where there was some problems. They still have problems in, in, as a park down there. It was in the newspaper the other day, prostitution, people getting beat up. Um, and what they've done, of course, is they've, uh, sent, they, they've really organized their police for undercover work and they've arrested a lot of people. And, and so that, you know, of course, they put it in the newspaper, they advertise.
I've seen crackdowns in areas before that cleaned them up, you know?
But my, my point is when we, you know, we're just finding this out now. So my, my question, my point to staff is see what we can do now before it gets any worse and see if we can do something to, to reverse the process.
It, as is all information, it will be passed along to the police department, but like I said, I've, what they can do about it right this second, I, I can't answer that question.
Well, I'll tell you flat out. I've been here twenty-two years and in twenty-two years, I've, even I know about this area.
Of course.
And, and so it's, it can't be denied, um, that the police doesn't know about it. On the other hand, you can't fully blame the police. I mean, and for not.
I'm not blaming them for the little they're doing. They, I'm saying they need to increase that.
I'm just, it's not, it's, it's basically, it's, I mean, let's face it. I mean, if, if it was an easy problem to solve, it would have been solved a long time ago. Not that I am trying to say that they don't have a responsibility to do this, but I do think, and I, I've said this, uh, well, I'll just say last year I made it a point. If you want an area to improve, and I was, at that time I was specifically talking about, um, the, um, CRA area. You have to have, everybody has to be all in. Um, it can't just be, you have to follow the plan. And in the CRA, in the CRA area, what I've always seen is nobody follows the plan. You don't have to change. Everybody wants to get off and do something different. In this particular area, if you want to make that change, you need community buy-in from business owners, from the residential, because you have a lot of residents, residential in here. You need the city, you need the city police. And I say that in two different stages. You need support of, uh, the city manager and the council as well as the police department. But, you know, and you need to stick to the plan. And that's something that we haven't done in other areas. In this area, we're asking people to come in from out of, out of town and yet we, we, I mean, who else? Who would, in this room is going to walk down that area in the middle of the night? Yeah. Um, so let's not kid ourselves on what needs to be done. It's more of just let's make the plan and do it. It's that easy. I mean, it, it's not easy, but I mean, I'm just saying that, and then follow it. Because a lot of times we make plans and we don't carry through with them. And I see that, I've seen that for years. Um, you know, I had a, a brother that actually lived on Cannaveral and I think Tra, Tropic years ago, and I hated going to his house. I hated knocking on his door. And I was very happy when he moved, but, um, so I saw it firsthand myself.
Well, I can say this, I, at this point, I, we have some buy-in from the city, uh, city council. I mean, they're the ones that directed us to move forward in this and, and it's not an easy process and, and, you know, and, and this is a common situation with any place that gets one of these rails to trails because more often than not, the rail to trail goes through an area of town that is older, a lot of dilapidated structures and activities like this do go on. I'm not saying that's right, but it is the case in many jurisdictions that have these sorts of facilities. And so, um, the city council gave us the direction to amend the zoning code to try to allow some flexibility in, on these properties that hopefully spur some engagement. And, um, I think that at the end of this, whenever we present that, uh, the residents and property owners would like to see some improvements from the city side as well. I think that that, um, I hope that is well received and even if it's not, it's still presented to them. So they, they will understand, you know, that, that it is a two-way street.
Question. Uh, in other communities, when they have problems like this, what are the use of surveillance cameras? I mean, how, how does this, uh, can you tie that in perhaps, um, in, in, in this area? Is that something that people do, the other communities do? Is that doable?
I mean, I think many people, many private property owners, I mean, uh, we would never require that from, or I doubt we would ever require that as part of a property ownership that you have to provide that.
No, I'm talking about on the trail itself that belongs.
I think so, sometimes those, that is the case that, that they will be installed, but I don't know that any of that has been discussed for the trail in town at this point.
Just an idea.
Sure.
I would.
I, I was thinking the same thing. We were talking, I was talking to ladies next, I don't know why they put surveillance cameras down there and see, and see who's doing all this stuff. They use on red lights and everything. See, we run through red lights. How come they can't find who's passing this stuff around?
It brings up.
Right?
It brings up that commercial, you know, um, you can be a security guard or a security monitor. They ain't going to change the situation if you're just watching it and, uh.
Evil elements do not like to operate under light, okay?
And cameras are lighter.
Cameras.
I do believe that.
Good, that's a good step forward.
You know, we need to, finally you say enough's enough. On the other hand, you need to, if there isn't that need, it's just going to move elsewhere. And so you've got to consider the impact. Um, I'm not saying this is the place for it, by no means. I'm just, I'm just saying that you got to understand that, that I believe that it, and I'm not, I'm not the police, nor do I have the background. And, and they, they will come and tell you, this is what we need to do, I'm sure. And hopefully they do, but maybe that, what, that's what needs to happen in these meetings for these trails. Because that is a key.
It's the biggest problem you have with your trail, I'm telling you, the end of that. Speaking, I have one question and I'll sit down with somebody else up here.
Sure.
You, you were talking about, uh, businesses along DeLeon and Main Street?
Yeah, as far as that's where non-residential uses are allowed now.
Non-resi, okay. And, and that's something you're trying to change, right?
Yeah, so that's what, that, that's what we're recommending to allow some of those properties to be reused.
Okay, can I understand where the end of the trail is? How is it, how's it going to flow into downtown area?
So right now the trail ends at the end of Cannaveral, correct? Okay. The city is pursuing getting an easement from F, Florida East Coast Railway to basically bring it behind Boggs Gases and tie it into Main Street, more or less at the end of, um, near the end of Dummit Street. So that's the goal of where it would end. So you wouldn't have to come down Cannaveral. But we had not secured that easement as of yet.
Yeah, that, that, that makes more sense than going down DeLeon be, because now you've, you've taken your patrons around the problem. And down to where downtown's already cleaned up, you know, you got historic Titusville and all that.
So it is working on being extended, but, um, we did, we're having to work with the, the agency that owns the land to get an easement across it. So that's just, it's been a work in progress. I, we're making progress on it, but it's just, we're not a hundred percent there yet.
You know, one of the worst things that can happen, I'm going to, going to beat this horse to death, uh, one of the worst things that can happen is to have a serious, uh, incident, okay, on the trail.
Really?
And I, I'm telling you that, you, you, you want to build a problem for yourself and discourage all the work and effort that's gone in to, to this trail, okay? So I, I want to emphasize that, that if, if it's not cleaned up and it's not patrolled, maybe we need a motorcycle patrol, you know, I mean, I don't know. But my point is the city's reputation is on the line on a project like this. And, and that's all I'm saying. And, and it should be taken very, very seriously. And the people that are, that are doing no good need to understand, okay, that you're going to get caught. And, and if they understand it, they're not going to be there. So.
You used to have some bicycle patrols on Garden Street years ago, and that seemed to help, you know, at the convenience stores and stuff like that.
But I'm just saying, I think, I think you need to kind of focus around this and see what.
Understood. Okay, sir? Did you fill out a card?
He did. I thought he was your public politician.
My name is Sebastian. I, I live on five eleven Main Street, just next to the, the Red River Crossing. I, initially I was going to, uh, to create a, a language school there. Um, because I'm a teacher, I, and that's my, my, my profession. I'm Italian, but I lived in, in Brazil for many years and, uh, and so that was the idea, but, but I've, I've lived there for two years and I think I'm not going to do it anymore. And we have, we have talked about this. Uh, it, it is true that there may be some issues about lighting, but it is an easy thing to do because I complained and I, I filled out the form and I went to, to the city council, council and I discussed with them. And they say, yeah, we are going to look at it and nothing happened. I filled out two forms and nothing happened. I called FPL and they told me that if I was going to pay fifty dollars a month, they would put a light just in front of my house. Well, as an option, right? But can you imagine every, you know, everybody that needs some lighting has to pay fifty dollars a month? Yes, the issue of the lighting is very important as I, I agree with the gentleman over there. I mean, I, I lived there and I worked there in my house. I see that happening every single night. Last night someone was beaten there. Um, someone was crying. You, you can't see anything. It's completely dark. Uh, I called the police. Uh, when my car was vandalized in front of my house, I called the police. And they told me, well, go to the city council, complain about lighting because that's what we're missing here. I don't think it's necessarily, uh, a difficult thing to do, to put an extra lighting light there, really. And besides, it's, it's not on a track, but it's outside the track, on the, on the west side. This, that part of the main street has been completely neglected, I feel. If you walk, for example, uh, eastward on the north side of Main Street, you find out that, that the sidewalk hangs in the middle of the road. There's no way that you can walk anymore because the cars are coming against you. I'm sure that you have projects for this, but, you know, but probably signs would be very helpful. Marks on the, on the pavement would be very helpful. There are no marks on the pavement. You don't know where the lane starts and finishes there. I mean, it's very complicated. Please take a look at, I mean, you know, drive by tonight and see what happens there. Um.
May tomorrow, tomorrow. No, I'm joking, but.
I, um, I, I, just a, a couple more things. Uh, my daughter's visiting me from Utah and, uh, she has to walk with a flashlight at night from, from, uh, Washington, uh, from Washington to my house. She has to have a flashlight because she can't see anything there, you know? So it, it's a very complicated thing. There's another, another item that I would like to add to what the gentleman was saying before. It's about noise pollution. Now, I'm just next to the track, of course. I mean, I don't know if there's any reason why the, the conductor of the train has to, you know, honk so many times. We have three yard, you know, thirty, what is it? Three hundred yards from Gardner to Main Street, probably, more or less, right? About s, he honks something like six, seven, eight times. Is there a reason for it? I mean, I don't know. I mean, um, so I, I was wondering if there's an ordinance about noise pollution, um, in the city. And that would be also helpful, uh, for the future development of that section, if we can have probably, uh, you know, a, a better. If we can have probably uh, you know, a, a better quality life and we can sleep at night, if possible.
I, I have a question for staff along with that. Aren't there a requirements in terms of whistle uh, blowing as they come into the city and they go through these crossings?
I'm not a hundred percent sure what those requirements are, I, um, if they weren't a requirement, I'm assuming they would not do that. However, I do know that the um, the city does not have an ordinance for a quiet zone is what they're called. Uh, we don't have one and the reason that we don't, uh, this came up, I think, a few years ago and the city was going to pursue one. Um, but the trick, the Brevard County TPO is, I believe, in the process of pursuing one for the entire county. So we, city staff did not begin to pursue the quiet zone because what the TPO was working on would cover the county, including all the municipalities. So um, I know that it's a lengthy process typically because it's a negotiation, I believe, with the, the rail companies and the rail lines. So um, that sometimes can end up being a very lengthy process. But that's why the city itself's not working on one is because a county agency is working on one that would cover us as well in their, in their um, quiet zone. But it is being worked on, I don't know how quickly it will be um, completed, but it is being worked on.
Cause I know.
We do have a noise ordinance.
Yeah.
We do have a noise ordinance, but it does not cover the trains.
Because I know about, about two years ago, there was a controversy about it and people were complaining uh, about the train whistle. And I think that they quit, I understood that they quit doing it within so many yards of, of, of an automatic gate at a certain hours when the train would come through at night. That was my impression, I, it's been a while.
I'm not sure.
But um, if, you know, the homeowner's there, uh, it's kind of unfair. Yeah, cause I tell you, I live on Burberry and, and Knox McGray, which is pretty far, a couple, you know, maybe a mile, probably two miles, three miles from the railroad tracks, okay? And there was a time when the train would be regular, okay? And I would hear that if there was an east wind, it would just be that far, I would actually hear that two or three in the morning. It, it's quit happening, so I suspect that maybe at certain crossings, they don't have to do it.
Possibly.
But, I mean, I, maybe you should look into it, I, I don't know.
But I feel also it's an individual thing of the conductor, because I heard some people, s- s- some trains are very loud, as some are not. Uh, you can live with some.
The freight trains are very heavy when they're going through.
But the, the decibels level, I mean, it's extreme. Uh, and, and so if we can just limit that, that would be uh, that would be great. Uh, one, one last item that I'd like to say and then uh, about garbage and littering on that street. Uh, everybody walks through that and it seems that they feel comfortable in just throwing their garb- garbage in my property or the property of the, 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 the train, the train ro- the train company. Um, so I, I feel that we should put some signs there too, you know, littering probably would be helpful. I don't know if they're going to respect those signs, but that would be good. And also the, there's the, there's that uh, the city uh, cleaning truck, you know, they, they wash the streets. For some reason, they never get to the, what my eyes is, you know, just this, stop just earlier. Um, they never, they just turn around and they go back on Main Street and the west side. So I'm not sure if there's a reason for that or if we can just um, make a note and say, if you can just keep going up to the. Up to my house. But they just stop right there and they just turn around. This is the third time that I see that. I was going to tell them.
When you see him in the truck, just wave.
Come on.
Either that or all public's works. Public works for the city of Titusville. And uh, they probably have them extended. Take care of you.
So anyway. Anyway, I'd, I'd like to see staff address some of this if we could and see where we wind up.
That was the purpose of this, yeah, to pass all this along.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other cards or would anybody else like to come up and speak?
Mary Summy.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Mary Summy and I own uh, almost two acres on Main and Cannavaro on the corner. And so, but before I address that issue, I'd like to address the drug situation, oh, wait, just a second. This is what I got on my cellphone as the meeting started. We had three different cars pull in and park, probably prostitutes, which is probably true. One about midnight, another about one I M and the last at three A M. When I went to check with the flashlight, they took off. Okay, this happens on Main and Cannavaro on my property consistently. Now, I have years ago started a group called the Nosy Neighbors and I was successful in, in curtailing a lot of the situations. I'm old and tired now, so I need help. What I've done so far is to gather a product that I'm hoping I can put into businesses and, and they will cooperate in getting people to sign up to help. What the product is, is toilet paper and written on it is help us wipe out crime. And if we can get people to sign up and work on that, these people do not like attention. When I saw one of the uh, Johns take two of his prostitutes and walk down, excuse me, Main Street and I pulled up beside him and I said, you're leaving Main Street right now. And he said, no, I'm not, I says, I'm driving right beside you two, you're on garden. He got on garden, called the police and told them I was stalking them. But needless to say, I'm making a fact, excuse me, I had somebody call me last week who is in, into drugs and told me that he had been robbed on his property, right in the neighborhood. And then he was about to, to throw in the towel and wanted to talk to me. So I went and talked to him and told him that I like to work out a deal with him and he's willing to talk to me. The point is, we need people that are not afraid to say anything, they don't like attention, they don't like noise, they don't like lights, they don't like cameras. So in order to get that done, I need to collect a bunch of people to help wipe out crime. Now, aside from that, on Main and Cannavaro, I have almost had two acres. We're putting in bike barns where people can store their bikes or they can rent special needs bikes for people, veterans and people on special needs who are blind, can't, need help to see with their imagination. Uh, with all sorts of children that can't do anything, so we will have special needs bicycles and someone to go with them in order to enjoy the trail. We're going to have on Cannavaro, which I'm hoping you don't close it off completely because I'm gonna put a, a ride in, not a drive-in, but a ride in for them to pick up sodas and sandwiches and things that are one-handed, so you can ride your bike and go on, where they can stop, refresh, relax and keep on going. I have a bathroom that is being built with a shower, the shower head happens to be an, an old um, watering can for the garden. So it's gonna be country western, which I've done with nearly everything. So we'll have a lot of interesting things to do there. And uh, but right now, I'm doing it with me and my daughter. We need some volunteers. So we're, I'm right now looking into getting all that together so I can progress. And I've had health issues, so that was a little bit of a delay. But we're on the road now, we're on the trail now and getting ready to do things. So if anybody wants to volunteer for anything, including the, the help us stop crime, let me know.
Uh, before you leave, let me make a suggestion, okay? I appreciate you coming before us, okay? It's important that we become aware of the situation and folks like yourself are trying to do something about it. But I would strongly urge you to go to council.
Yes.
Go to city council because that, that's where, where the final answer comes from.
Okay.
But I appreciate it very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else like to come up and speak? Okay, okay. Um, let's get back to the U M U. And here's some things that I wanted to bring up. Um, I'm not, um, these were when I read this, uh, this was, I'm just talking in general. So I know that they created U M U in nineteen ninety-two, we adopted it in two thousand something, is that correct?
Well, it was, it, it's been in the code and was adopted in nineteen ninety-two.
But didn't start using it.
There, it was applied in ninety-two, but there were some significant amendments to it in uh, several years ago, I think in.
Yeah.
Two thousand six or two thousand eight.
Um, we um, in mid two thousands is when we started using more mixed uses. Uh, I, I call it old school um, code where it was R one, R two, R three, um, com- community commercial and you know? Um, in the mid two thousands, we started using more of this mixed uses. The, one of the things that, that worries me is that um, I don't like the fact that we instead of looking at zoning, we go to the code and we change the code on and we open it up uh, for everything. Now, granted, U M U is not a widely used code. As a matter of fact, it, there's.
It's only applied to this area, yeah.
Um, so on one hand, I say, it's acceptable to change it. On the other hand, I don't wanna see U M U go anywhere else because it really does not. I mean, I would say this could be downtown mixed use, this could be, but U M U is, you know, it's just uh, it's very difficult to use. But on the other hand, this was my thought. So, but it's not going down Main Street, so that changes everything. The street, what, because it is a, the code, is it doable? Is it possible to write in the code to say, in this particular, you write the exception on what you can do within that district, in that area? Because I know that right now, we, we can only use Park and Deleon.
Correct.
But the problem is, is that you need it down the trail. So you, to create that atmosphere, you create the exception down the trail street.
We had talked about that, it, staff did, however, we were concerned that some properties that front along the trail are large, some are very small. And so, and we also felt that Main Street as well could benefit. So we started getting to the point where we have all of these streets that you can do it on and it ends up being, you can do it on more, you can do commercial uses on more streets that you can't do commercial uses on. So we got to the point where we just decided to pose the idea of opening it up to where commercial uses could be allowed. Certain commercial uses could be allowed anywhere within the district, so long as uh, certain use criteria could be met. Um, and then go from there, we basically just wanted to gauge uh, everyone's opinion on that. So that was our take on kind of the direction of why we went in, in that way. But if you're concerned about that. Then certainly, you know, we can, we can come up with regulations that would limit it to only certain streets, more similar to, to how the district is currently regulated now.
I'm just saying that, you know, to, as, as being creative, that has, it's been what you've been doing with other stuff. You've just changed the code, you've changed the zoning exceptions and since this is only in this area, change the code. Uh, rewrite it to allow those uses. I mean, it would be nice to see, I know that we, actually, I was part of the discussions on Main Street and on the one-way and, and all that. And I got involved because a business had issues and they asked me to get involved in. Um, so I thought that it was ending there at Main Street and um, River, River Road or.
Indian River Avenue.
Indian River Avenue, right? So, but now you're saying it's ending.
Oh, no, sorry, the trail, uh, the trail right now uh, ties into Cannavaro, at the end of Cannavaro.
Okay.
And what I'm saying is, if you went, basically it kind of follows a curve down to Main Street that goes one block basically to the west and then it ties right back into Main Street where the trail.
Okay. My, what I'm, what I'm thinking though is that on one hand, you need to clean up the entire neighborhood, you need to clean up the district. That's, it's pretty much a must. Um, you have to protect uh, residents, you have to protect those coming in. Um, I think whoever said, I think you said, you, you're endangering the reputation by not cleaning up the area. Um, I think the, from what I recall, I remember when I first started talking about this, I didn't realize how much in city council was. And this is the previous city council. And um, there was a big fight over Main Street and they were wanting to basically take a lot of parking spots away. Um, so I started talking to some of the city councilmen and they said, this is what we're doing. We are doing this and this is why, and they were talking about Winter Garden, which used to be called Winter Garbage with the trail. And now it's, it's really changed the city there. So they were committed. If city council and the new city council needs to be as committed, um, part of that requires investment in this area with lighting, police. I know that we've increased police um, in downtown area. You know, the same thing is, there, there's gonna have to be some commitment. And um, I know you can't write that in code and that's really what we're looking at. But to be creative on this, I'm, I'm saying, I think that we had additional parking with public parking. Um, I believe that the city could come up and buy up vacant lots. Um, businesses could buy up vacant lots in the condition that it's paved, you know? Um, I think you need, you do need to change some of the parking requirements um, in this area under U M U. But I would hate to see that applied for all over the city.
Again, that's not what we were intending, it would be specific for this area.
Um, at the same time, I think we need to be um, creative in allowing businesses to develop, like you'd said. Um, I think the um, if you are wanting more of an eclectic mix of arts and drinks and uh, tiny restaurants and then you need to be able to open up those streets to allow that. And that's, that, that's why I was bringing that up. I would love to see Main Street be a real Main Street. I mean, right now, really what it is, is it's houses, some industrial, some, you know, it's not a true Main Street. And I understand that you could say that it's a small Main Street, but I think for the trail, we should try to encourage it to grow.
Sure.
Grow farther west.
Um, I got something to say. And I want to talk specifically to the audience out here. Seems like any kind of change is made is done with large groups. My suggestion is that you get your neighbors together and your friends and all of you attend the city council meeting at the same time. That kind of a mass show and will make some eyeballs open up. Maybe set some people on the edge of their chairs a little bit, one or two or three at a time, they ain't gonna do anything. It's like anything else we develop in this country, once they see a large crowd, they, they become like, uh-oh, we better do something about this, right? Now, my suggestion is that you, like you came here tonight, try to get as many as you can. And this lady back here was asking for volunteers and that, get them all at one time and go to the city council meeting. Fill that chamber up and watch and see what happens. Something's gonna happen, believe, it always does, this is no different.
Unlike anything else you need to follow up? Individually um, with council, sorry.
Sorry. Oh, on, uh, on page six of ten.
Are you talking about in the, sorry, in the study?
It's page fifty-eight of seventy-four.
Okay.
The last paragraph, okay? And the last sentence, this amendment focused on the allowable uses in the classification, the development standards for permitted and conditional uses and removing unnecessary general provisions, can you explain that?
So that was based on the changes that occurred in, in two thousand five. And so basically what happened during that time is that when the U M U code was originally implemented, it had a lot of requirements for a single-family home of, you know, almost a quarter of an acre, which obviously this being in one of the oldest parts of the city or one of the older parts of the city, none of the laws forever plotted to be a quarter of an acre. So there were a lot, basically when that, when the U M U code was adopted in nineteen ninety-two, it made a lot of properties non-conforming. And so that typically causes issues, you know, as time goes on, not necessarily right day one, but as time goes on, when you have a lot of non-conforming structures and properties and things like that, it makes the properties hard to sell or things. Structures and properties and things like that, it makes the properties hard to sell or things like that. And so um, in two thousand and five, they came back and recognized that, hey, most of these lots are actually only five thousand square feet, not ten thousand square feet in size. And so they, they tried to reflect that in, in the, the standards of the zoning districts. So that's what they tried to do in two thousand and five. And I think they were somewhat successful in um. In rectifying a lot of those non-conformities. Um, but there are still, and, and this isn't unique just to the zoning district. I mean, it, it happens a lot of times. When you have a, when you have an older area of any city, anything like that. That has a wide variety and mix of uses, it, it's difficult to make changes without, you know, upsetting someone.
Okay. I just wanted to know what you meant by unnecessary general, and your explanation fits. I just didn't understand what that, what that was. Thank you.
Um, so I want to add real quick. Um, so I, I went through the um, notes from the citizens. And I thought it was really interesting, um, only because, I mean, it, it is, everybody that lives in Titusville is aware of this area. But I really liked this comment from one of the citizens. It says, there is concern that many owners are not willing to improve their properties. Until the city cleans up the area. The city's a stakeholder in that area as well. They are the stakeholder. Um, that is the function of the city. And so I think that if um. You know, I think you need to make council aware of that. Council, you know, it's, it's one thing to be aware of something, it's another thing to have it on your radar. And this is an item that is good for that area because it, you have to address the issue. You know, so the trail can change that area. And you can't ignore the fact that this area is crime-ridden. Uh, it's, I mean, it's really industrial looking. Um, and it needs to change. But you're not gonna get buy-in from the residents without the city putting up the first. Um, I guess the first step, doing the first step, so.
Actually, on just safety here, okay, that's what we've basically discussed, you know.
Sure.
From our representative, from our residents here. And my only thing is, it's great for us to be brought to our attention. It's great that we, we're discussing this, okay? But we need some actionable response, okay? And, and, and that's what's looking forward to seeing what can be done. And certainly we can, we can start to make some improvement.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, so I don't want to keep feeding this. Are there any other questions or comments of staff? Okay, so this is the non-action. Do you think you have enough to continue on and move forward?
Yeah, um, that, so basically our next steps will be to take the input from the original meeting, the input from the C meeting. Um, like I said, I always continue to, at any internal meetings, as far as especially related to the trail, you know, pass along this information. It's always invaluable to have input from, from the public, so we love to pass that along and, and continue to make people aware. Uh, but basically the next step will be to draft an ordinance that addresses the changes to the zoning code itself. And also a, basically a packet of recommendations addressing the other issues such as safety that we can't necessarily control uh, through zoning. All of it will be presented to the planning and zoning commission and to city council. Uh, and I urge everyone that, that would like to attend, uh, or like to have their voice heard to attend both the next P and Z meeting. And uh, or the, not necessarily the next P and Z meeting, but the scheduled meeting when this item is, is ready to be presented. And um, and the city council's aware as well, because we are one voice of staff. But certainly it helps when they hear it directly from, from the other stakeholders in the area, so.
Any idea on a timeframe?
I was waiting on, I was waiting on this meeting to, to make sure that our strategy wasn't way off course. And so basically, we're gonna move forward with the, the strategy. I don't, I didn't hear any outright objections. So um, we will have a public hearing for the P and Z in, like I said, with ordinance. If, if we have things that are off, we'll have time to go back and make changes. But I would like in a couple of months to, to be in here, to be doing the public hearings, so hopefully quicker, but we'll see.
And my, my only thing on this is that generally I'm, I'm, I don't like to see uh, major changes only. Because uh, I'm afraid that that could be implemented in other parts of the city. I think this is a perfect opportunity for staff to be very creative. Um, zoning can change, uh, it makes it easier to redevelop, but it encourages this development. Uh, it gives you a lot of more freedoms to do things with your property that you normally can't do in other areas. So at the same time, it's uh, sticking to the plan and not just keep on. Cause what we tend to do throughout the city is we give one exception, two exception, three exception to anybody that comes up. And if you have an overall goal, I say stick to it. And this area would go, if it can change, it would go back to, it could potentially go back to that, so.
And in this case, that, that's the approach we were taking, is to be creative on this and allow uh, more flexibility here maybe than other areas of the city. Mainly because um, the, the construction and implementation of the, of the trail is kind of a, a very unique scenario. It's not every day that something like this happens, you know, going back to giving an exception or something like this. And hopefully, the intent of this is to benefit all the property owners, not just necessarily one, like this is what sometimes happens. And so um, that, that really is what, what we're going with. We feel like this is a unique opportunity and we'd like to, to capitalize on it and make it better for us as the city. And of course, the, the property owners that, that have, you know, their stakeholders in that area.
At the same time, I think it should be written for the goals, uh, to remind, I've watched city staff switch out many a times. And so to put it, or to, let's just say to codify it so that it cannot be misconstrued, that the intent.
Yeah.
This is the goal of what we're doing here. And uh, that would make it longer lasting, cause it could take twenty years to do this. It would be realistic, you know?
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Um, okay ma'am, if you'd like to come up.
I can do the card.
And if you can do a card, you have to, thank you.
Um, I'm Heather Summy, Mary's daughter. I've also been very influenced of the area. But quick question, is that area still hub zone? I think it is.
That's farther.
Most of the, most of the city, I believe the hub zone is um, east of the railroad. But in that area might actually be.
I think it does qualify for hub zone, cause I had a business there and it was a woman, woman that owned in hub zone, so it was beneficial. I don't know if that has positive influence, because you could possibly get grants being in a hub zone through the state of Florida to help. With these financial situations running with the city. If they do balk about, well, we don't have the money, we may be able to do the hub zone routes. I'm not sure if the state or even the federal government even may.
The credits and.
The economic development director is very familiar with that. I'll follow up with her. Um, and double check, make sure that if it isn't one and if she's aware of any funding, that potentially we could match or anything like that.
I would be surprised if it's considered a distressed area and then there's zero uh, zero down financing for.
And that might help some of the influence, especially with the, we are also thinking about Airbnb, which again would also influence the quiet zone. As well as hub zone and the live-in work, because most, most B and Bs have people who live there.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you all. That's all I had on that.
Okay, next item.
All right, the next item on your agenda is under new business ten A. And this is a medical marijuana update. Again, this is not an action item and I'd like to provide some information for you all. As we've heard a moratorium on this item twice before, recently in June, extending the moratorium. On marijuana organized facilities and dispensaries in the city of Titusville through December of this year. Now, our council may act on that and revoke the moratorium if it so chooses. But I wanted to provide you an update because the legislature had a special session. And on June twenty-third, the governor signed Senate Bill eight A into law as number two thousand seventeen dash two hundred and thirty-two. That item became available after the memorandum was published in your agenda and I can send it out to each of you. I'm happy to also summarize a bit of it. In your agenda, you'll see first an article that was published on June nineteenth. The reason I included that article.
Page you're on.
We're starting on page sixty-five. On page sixty-six of the agenda, you'll see a news article that was published. And that was just to demonstrate that the Treasure Coast and other areas of the state of Florida had already adopted ordinances. That now need to be repealed because there is a preemption in the new law. That basically limits what the cities and counties can do regarding regulating medical marijuana. There's basically two options. You can either enact an outright ban to ban dispensaries within your municipality or county. Or you may regulate them the same as pharmacies. And those two options are presented in this legislation. They start on page thirty-one. And it's also summarized in, in your agenda packet. What the option for allowing the, the dispensaries would do says that the municipality may not have any criteria. Different from a pharmacy. The municipality may not enact ordinances for permitting or determining the location of dispensing facilities. That are more restrictive than pharmacies. And so what the city has done in order to educate our council. Is we've, we've created a map so that our staff and our council can visualize where a dispensary may be allowed. If we were to incorporate the option that allows us to regulate the same as a dispensary. What that would do is we looked at our code and we see what zoning categories currently allow a pharmacy. And we also look at where all of the schools are, because the state legislation says that there may not be a dispensary within five hundred feet of any school. So the map shows the schools and it shows the zoning where a pharmacy is allowed. And I can send that to you along with the, the legislation, but I want to make sure you understand it. That's why I didn't have copies for everyone. Within the red circles, that's where the schools are and those areas would be prohibited. You'll see a little bit of the green overlap within that red circle. And because there's green within the red does not mean that it can be permitted there. Anything within five hundred feet of a school, I'm sure you understand, would be prohibited. The legislation does go into specific requirements for security, lighting. It defines what doctors may be, are required to do in order to authorize the use of medical marijuana for their patients. It goes on to what the requirement, requirements are to be a caregiver for a patient and the identification cards. And the bulk of the legislation talks about the medical marijuana treatment centers. Legislation has allowed the state to license ten centers and up to four may be added in the future. So that would allow a total of fourteen medical marijuana treatment centers throughout the state. Each of those treatment centers may have up to twenty-five of their own facilities as they're proven regulated by the state. So what I see happening is the state's regulating it across the board and not giving the flexibility with home rule. To allow for the zoning criteria set by municipalities and counties.
Explain your last statement.
So the zoning is not something that a county or municipality may entertain regarding the dispensary. Or the, the sighting of these locations. What the state has done is they've said that anything that you currently have on the books. For pharmacies is the way that you will regulate your med, medical marijuana treatment centers.
So when I was reading this, I thought that was interesting because it, in my opinion, it made. It gave an incentive for cities to ban this, because they don't have that home rule, they don't have that control. And it, it basically says, if you can have a pharmacy there, you can have medical marijuana dispensary. At the same time, I thought we did an ordinance on the pill mill ordinance. And so that encompassed um, pharmacies as well. And which was more restrictive to pharmacies, um, on pharmacies, I thought.
I think they were defined as cash-only pharmacies.
All right, so basically when, when I read this, it said, if you don't ban it and you then, and you adopt something. Then you are, how'd, how'd you word it? Basically, you can't put any regulations on this if you don't.
From having any, we're preempted from having any stronger regulations than what we have for pharmacies. And I would agree with you that it is an incentive to ban them in the financial respect. Because one of the other statements that is provided in this legislation is that a municipality or county may not charge. A medical marijuana treatment center a license or permit fee in an amount greater than the fee charged by such municipality or county to pharmacies. So that fee amount is also prescribed and can't be varied or increased for this particular use. And I think that that's something taken into consideration because it's so new and different for local jurisdictions. That they would maybe be inclined to have a higher fee amount in order to handle this new business that they have not dealt with before. And without having that ability to charge something higher than what you charge a pharmacy, that may discourage.
So what, what I'm trying to understand though, um, something that. Why, why is it that a pharmacy um, doesn't prescribe this? I'm asking that because if that is the case, you eliminate marijuana only. And then you're saying, if the pharmacy chooses to, to do this, because the, the vote was for medical marijuana. It wasn't for recreational. Um, the state has set certain criteria to doctors of continuing education. Um, I mean, they put up, they were very specific in their criteria on who can do this. But at the same time, I'm like, why is it, why can a city not encourage pharmacy only? And pharmacy only. Now, if the pharmacy chooses not to do it, well, that's, that's okay. But if they do, that's a different story. Um, rather than encourage marijuana-only businesses.
I asked the same question when it came before us and the, what the answer that I received was that. It has to do with how the federal government, um.
Hmm, true, true, true.
Talks about marijuana, their, their classification system.
What I don't understand is, why are we passing laws for drugs? I don't care if you wanna call it miracle, whatever, and you guys are fighting and drugs passing around all over. We're passing laws that make some moral out there. And knowing good and well that any kind of drug we put out there, there's this element that's gonna change it to their benefit, one way or another. You can say, well, they're gonna only, it's gonna be only medical one, a medical use my foot. Cause they're gonna take this stuff, doctor it up and do whatever they can to sell it for bigger and harm. So we're trying to sell, we're trying to placate fifteen, twenty people and destroy thousands of others. That don't even make any sense to me, none at all. And they know, don't care what kind of drug you put out there, there's this element that's gonna try to fix it, to their benefit. Now you put it out there and you think you guys got trouble now, hm, just wait.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to understand currently pharmacies do have low THC. They can sell low THC, correct? That was a state and then they.
I don't know if all pharmacies have the ability to distribute it. I don't think that, I don't know that that's.
No, they don't. But my point on that is, is that that is an avenue that can be explored. Because I'm, originally, uh, you know, I was thinking federal, yes, federal law is, it's not legal. But on the other hand, they are allowing THC in other forms. This Florida has basically banned it from smokeable, um, which is very unique in comparison to other states. And so.
Another consideration would be the integration of the pharmacy industry. And the medicine that is currently provided by the pharmacy is very different from what will be provided by the medical marijuana treatment center. Which says that the, also the treatment center is, the way I look at it is, it's, it's the source of where the product is created. For the end user. And then the, the, the facilities that fall underneath the treatment center are the places that would open up. In smaller towns, because there's only ten or maybe fourteen treatment centers throughout the state. And the treatment center is licensed by the state to hold a license to cultivate process, transport and dispense. The medical cannabis. And that's the source for the facility that then distributes to the patients. And maybe there is a relationship between the treatment centers and the pharmacies that could be created. But the way that they've established the entire setup is with a medical marijuana treatment center distributing to its own facilities. And then to the patients down the line.
Question?
Yes.
I've tried to follow this, but I've lost track of it in the last few weeks. And reading this here on page sixty-nine of seventy-four, item number two. And it, you know, it, it's, it's a little puzzling. I, I'm. And it, you know, it, it's, it's a little puzzling. I, I'm not saying we could do anything about it. But it seems to me there's a motivation here that I, I, I'm questioning. I, I think there's a lot of dollars and cents involved in this, and I don't mean that in a good way. Because if you stay here, the legislation allows local governments to ban medical marijuana treatment centers, dispensing facilities. If the local government does not ban the facilities, dispensing facilities, it may not place any restrictions on the number dispensing, allowed within jurisdiction limits. It may not adopt any regulations dispensing that are more restrictive than ordinance regulating pharmacies. That doesn't, that's, defies common sense. That is illogical. You, you either regulate or you don't. I mean, it, it, so you're going to ban?
The third option that I could look at would possibly be for local ordinances to change what's on the books for pharmacies. And to make pharmacy restrictions different from what they currently are. And I don't know how many, if any jurisdictions will pursue that alternative. That would be a third option to regulate pharmacies differently so that they're only in certain zoning categories. I can pass this map down the line so you can get an idea of where they would be allowed.
Does staff, do, do, do you have any other input on this? I mean, are, are, does staff any or have heard from the city manager about, has he commented on this specific?
Well, it'd really be the.
I don't believe that city manager has weighed in. This is a council decision. And, and your, this body could make a recommendation. However, I'm not asking for a particular action tonight. If you would like to make a recommendation, you may.
So, so am I reading this correctly? It's all or nothing?
There's two options that are presented by the legislation, either ban it or regulate it the same as a pharmacy.
Wow.
So, and my thought is, is what I would like to see is, I would like to see the code on pharmacies. I'd like to understand that a little bit better. I know it's like Office Professional, you know, where can it be located? I know that the map, but what I'm trying to, right now, what we should also be looking at is how many pharmacies we have. We don't want to be too restrictive, but you can change the code. But it creates it more restrictive. It does make it more restrictive. At the same time, the reality is, is that, yes, you see a lot of green, but the reality is you're not going to see that happen there if you create, if you open up the code. The, the alternate of that is banning it. And then, quite honestly, I'm kind of on the fence on that because it's like, on one hand, I look at it, sixty percent of Florida said, look, at least sixty percent. I don't know what the, the fool was, said, we want to open this up, okay? I don't know what Titusville is. I don't know what the, and we should probably look at that, too.
I know we're waiting to see what the county does because the county may possibly entertain a ban for the unincorporated area. And there's consideration to what effect that will have on the north end of the county. If all of the surrounding unincorporated has a ban, would that push a influx into our area? So questions like that have definitely been considered. And with the moratorium that we have in place, we have plenty of time to see what the surrounding areas do. And that's where we are today. And of course, if you have suggestions on one way or another, what you think is most appropriate, I don't know that our council has an opinion and, and they'll get this memo on Tuesday from the city attorney and have an opportunity to have that discussion.
I think we should look at the pharmacy regulation.
Well, even, even with the.
Gives us more options.
Like you said, the pharmacies, the pharmacies are, many of them are close to schools. But this stuff is not supposed to be anywhere near schools or anything like that. How you going to put it in a pharmacy with right down the street from the school or right across the street from the school?
Sure. Well, so in essence, it is more restrictive, but that's still directed by the state.
But you know what? Why don't we, I, I would, I would say we should take advantage of the more, of the banning it for a year and see how other communities work out. See how, what other communities, because they're going to have to follow the same rules and regs that we have. So I, I would like just to put, to put a ban, a moratorium, if you will, on any of these dispensary facilities within the city for at least a year and see how things shake out in other municipalities. So we know what we're doing.
Chelsea, I saw where eight A legislation, eight A Senate bill, eight A, has not been approved by the governor.
As of June twenty-third, it was. I was, I published my memo a few days beforehand. So I didn't have an opportunity to update it after your agenda was published.
The third?
June twenty-third.
I have a question, okay? In, in regard to what I just offered here is, is having a moratorium for a year to see how things shake out in other communities. But there are, I, I recognize that there may be people who need the medical marijuana. So if you have the moratorium, how does that work?
Currently, the moratorium is effectively a ban. It is.
A ban, okay.
And so what the city has is no regulation allowing it. As long as the moratorium is in effect, it's the same as a ban. There will be an expiration date to our moratorium, which I believe is in December. And at that time, we could either extend the moratorium, apply a ban, or adopt an ordinance that would allow medical marijuana the same as pharmacies. And so the first two options are almost the same, extending the moratorium or enacting a ban.
Have any of, have any of the pharmacies stepped up to the plate and said, okay, we're, we're going to be part of this? And in other words, that it can open up a dispensing facility that's separate from their business as a pharmacy?
Not that I've seen. What I've seen is new companies coming to the table that are getting their licenses and starting to open up shop in different places throughout, throughout the state. But I don't see a relationship between the traditional pharmacies that you've seen throughout the country, no.
Well, the last time this went through and it failed, I remember people coming up and said, we, this is what we want to do. I mean, you have interest of people wanting to do it in this area.
And that's true. And that may weigh on the council's decision. I've, you know, seen more people, I think, supporting it that come out from the public than against it. There's been both, of course, in communities across the state. So I think the council will listen to what the community has to say and what the community desires.
Well, I, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to it because it, it, there's certainly a benefit to the product. I mean, it, it's something that people need to use from, you know, from what I've been reading about it. But it has to be done so that it's only used in such a way and for the, for the, you know, the purpose that's intended. And, and that's the problem. So that's what needs to be dealt with. It's just not a matter of, of having these dispensaries. It's a matter of making sure that, you know, if you're going to treat it like alcohol, well, let's treat it like alcohol. But if you're going to treat it as a medical product, then it needs to conform to that type of rules and regulations, like you said, for pharmacies. And I don't get the idea of having independently-run dispensaries because that sounds like, I hate to say this because I, I really am not sure, but based, my impression, let's put it that way, is that this is a business deal, that this is a way for some people to make a lot of money. And I see that as, as a particular business, these dispensaries. So whether that's good or bad is, is another story. But if it's going to be regulated and there's a purpose, an intent for the dispensaries, for a, a need for people who need to have it, then I don't quite follow why people are taking this route. I'm just, to me, it's, it's, something's wrong. Anyway, I'm just, it just doesn't seem, this doesn't seem right.
Understood. Well, and that's why I wanted to look at more of the pharmacies and what are the possibilities. You got to truly look at both sides rather than just go for the easy answer and banning it. I don't think that's quite fair to the residents of Titusville. Myself personally, I, I mean, I will tell you, I've gone to Colorado. I don't like them. I don't like seeing them. I think that they do bring trouble. On the other, on, on the other hand, it isn't always for me to judge something. And it isn't always the government's place to have a way, weigh in on issues as well.
But that's, that's, well, yeah.
But on the other hand, so I think we should explore controlling it, of what can be done first. You have till December until the moratorium. And basically that gives you three and a half months. I don't know, maybe four months before you have to decide, are we going to continue another moratorium? Or we can go ahead and do an outright ban. But I would like to explore control because on one hand, I would, I definitely don't want to see Titusville have, you know, five and six and, and more dispensaries. They bring crime because they deal in cash. If they don't, that's, that's a, they've evolved. But my understanding is, is that they can't use the banks, federally insured banks. Is that still true?
There's a presumption that they can't because of the risk that's involved. And I believe that the majority chooses not to. I don't know that they can't so much as they don't, they don't engage with them because of the risk involved.
Have we heard anything from the pharmacy industry itself? I mean, has the pharmacy industry just laid back?
Heard, but we'll, we'll look into it to see what we can find.
I know that, I don't expect you to solve this problem for Florida.
Right.
Nor do I. On the other hand, I think we need to look at what's possible for Titusville. And I would hate, like I said, I would hate to just go for the ban first. It's an easy answer. I'm not, from what I've seen, I'm not fond of them. But on the other hand, like I said, it's, let's look at control first.
Sure.
Council could very well take it a whole different step. And we could, I mean, we've seen it many times where, you know, they're not, we're nowhere even close to being on the same page. It's their right. So ultimately, they're the ones to decide. We can give them options. Okay. Dr. Faison, I was surprised that you didn't weigh in on this because you seemed very passionate about this last time.
Well, I, the same way I was before, I've not made any, ever been changed at all.
I see tea with a big cat on a truck.
Okay. All right. So let's, does anybody want to add anything else? Okay. Is that enough to, I mean, like I said, that's what I would like to see. But is that enough or?
Right now, I don't need any particular action. I've heard what you all said. And I think that we are, what we're most curious about is to hear what council's reaction is on Tuesday night when Richard presents this for discussion to see if they have any feedback one way or another. Because with the legislation, it was, it was kind of surprising for the end result to come out the way that it did. We didn't expect to not have our ability to regulate zoning and citing criteria. And without that, it's one way or the other. We'll see where council decides. And definitely keep you informed and give you some information regarding the pharmacy regulations that we currently have in place.
Okay. All right. Petitions from requests public. So we'll go down and city reports.
I don't have anything else.
Anything else to report? Anything from the school board?
Uh, I got a note from Mr. Lindman today and he said there is no news out of BPS this time. However, he asked me if I knew anyone that lived in the Cocoa area and could serve on the planning and zoning as a member for the liaison for Cocoa's planning and zoning. And I am a member of the Cocoa Rotary, so I'll look there and see if there's somebody. Unless you know of someone that lives in Cocoa, let me know if you do. And I'll let him know.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Faison?
Nothing.
Vice Chairman Shaver?
No report.
Secretary Chambers?
Uh, nothing.
Member Baker?
No report, thank you.
Member Ritchie?
Nope.
Nothing? Okay. And, um, I did want to bring up one thing. So, and I mentioned it before because this is, um, this has been kind of weighing on me a bit. I'm watching a consistent, a consistent pattern in the last couple of years, maybe, late year, that rather than we go through zoning, we go through code changes. And it worries that, I don't feel that council has a true understanding of, and I'm in, you know, I'm only going to be on this board for a short time anyway. So I think my expiration is up in January.
No.
But, um, so I'm just going to put this out there. I feel at times that this is about who's coming before the boards than what's coming before the board. And I don't feel, like on one of the issues that came up before us, I mean, one of before council was truly appreciated of the changes that were made. And, you know, I, I watched that council meeting and I waited for input from staff and, and staff was silent. I appreciate, I respect, I truly respect all the city staff. And, and I can say from, that you are the best city staff that we've worked with, that I've worked with. Of your integrity, honesty. But, you know, it's, at the same time, I feel like there's times I need information and there's times that council needs that, that information. I can be wrong and I can accept that. I can. But I just don't believe that changing code is an appropriate mechanism rather to save money for applicants. I think that it is more prudent to look at zoning changes rather than changing the entire city code. And I'm just throwing that out there. And so if I'm, if council changes, decides to knock me off, I mean, so be it. But I, I feel it's important to put that out there. Uh, it's in reference to the changes to adult living facilities within SMU. And that's, that was, I was shocked that it was not reviewed more than what it was. So. That's all I had. And so we adjourned.